Start the meeting.
Okay, roll call for the city council meeting of January 21st, 2015 at 7:30 PM. Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Rancunzo is absent, Mr. Jones is running late, Mr. Kotowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, please rise for a moment of silent meditation and pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of minutes from the council meeting of January 7th, 2015, and bills for payment on January 23rd and 30th, 2015. Mr. Jones, not here yet, Mr. Kotowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan.
We have a request for repository sale. Is anyone here to talk about, uh, talk about one of their sales today? Is anybody here today? Yes, we have someone. If you could introduce yourself and, you know, talk about what you're proposing to do with property and kind of give a description of the property.
My name is Joe Ritchie. I live at 2509 Holland Street. I'm interested in this property. It's a cul-de-sac between 25th and 26th in Holland. There's, uh, there are two streets, Hillside Drive and Lawrence Place, adjacent to this cul-de-sac. I've been maintaining this property for about 10 or 12 years. It's, you know, it's owned by Baldwin. Went through, I'm on my second lawn tractor. I had photos showing, uh, prior to, uh, when I start cleaning it up because it was a junkyard. I, I don't really know what else I should, uh, you can ask me any questions.
Did you say you had some, oh, here's the photos here, I'm sorry. So we're passing the photos around.
Mr. President.
Yes, questions?
Yes, Mr. Ritchie, how long have you been maintaining this property?
I'd say over 10 years. I was offered the property through the maintenance supervisor for Baldwin, Mark Vamero, about eight years ago, nine years ago. And then I approached him again a few years later, but I didn't get any response. And I see now that it's on the repository list. I'm gonna put, I put a bid in for it.
Mr. President, uh, I, uh, Mr. Ritchie contacted me one day in, uh, in the fall and I took a ride up there and there were numerous tires dumped on there and it's been like that for, it's a hard place to find, number one, and it, you know, it is like a secluded cul-de-sac, but Mr. Ritchie has been cutting the lawn and everything, so I think with his presence, at least, you know, we won't have the same problems. But he, he's right when he talks about, there was anywhere from three to six tires there at any given time.
Are there any other questions from council on this repository sale? Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Ritchie. We're not going to be voting on this request today, but a later date, but we thank you for coming in and thank you for proposing this.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other requests for repository sales? Are there any other requests? We'll now move on to citizens to be heard, and we do have one speaker who has signed up today for, to speak first, Mr. Barnes.
Good evening, council. My name is Randy Barnes. I like these evening meetings, it saves on the parking fee out there. You know, I have to admire you council members, uh, for all the hours you invest in the two meetings a month, the committee meetings, attending meetings at various authorities, lays on the various administration department, uh, department, city government. In fact, one of you members, of course, spends an hour a week on taxpayer hotline. But you add in all the commute time, all the meetings, all the things, it's a lot of hours expended for $6,000 a year, isn't it? At the end of this month, you have given Mr. James Clem $6,000 and free coffee. What benefits did city government taxpayers receive for that $6,000, six months? Last year's memo from then-council president Witherspoon to the mayor and to the solicitor said, quote, "Avail ourselves of as institutional knowledge and training of the current and future employees of the city clerk's office for two years." Two years' worth of training. And then it goes on to say, "This was going to be for a small compensation." Well, that was March 7th, and then, uh, finally, what, it was October 1st, two months into the contract, we learned that we didn't hire Mr. James Clem for $12,000 a year for training, we hired him for being an archivist. So I hope that the four council members, and that would be council member Jones, Winarski, Coon, Coon, Witherspoon, can answer the question, what is the city, what has the taxpayers gotten for $6,000? When I think about all the hours that you people put in as elected officials for $6,000 a year, you've already given Mr. Clem, as of the end of this month, $6,000 plus free coffee. What have we gotten for the $6,000? What have the taxpayers gotten for the $6,000? What can we point to, say, okay, number one, we saved X amount of dollars because we had Mr. James Clem on the payroll for $12,000 a year while he's collecting a, what was that pension again? Oh, a measly $69,732 pension. How can anybody live in Erie on this $69,000 pension? How can that be? Well, of course you can't, because you gotta give the man an extra $12,000 a year for two years, just to tide him over. Because he was gonna train the employees, he was gonna train the current city clerk. There was no time to do that before the retirement, no time to train the employees, too much time drinking free coffee, taxpayers' expense, train the employees, should've found the time to do it for $12,000 a year. Oh, that's right. He's not training people, he's archiving things. If it wasn't real money, it'd be funny. Yes, taxpayers, if it wasn't real money, it'd be kind of a joke that you would give somebody $12,000. $12,000. For what? Well, we're waiting to hear for what? Because we got another six months to go, we got another $6,000 we're gonna put out. Then after that, we got another 12 months, another $12,000 we're gonna put out. Taxpayers oughta know what they're getting. I would like to ask President of the council to have the city clerk compile a list of what the taxpayers have gotten for $6,000 in the past six months. I think that's, uh, I think that's a fair question. It's money you spent because you couldn't, you couldn't give that $6,000 to the police department. They don't need $6,000 in six months or $12,000. The police department doesn't need it. Fire department doesn't need it. The roads department doesn't need it. You know who needs it? Mr. James Clem, who collects a, what was that pension again? $69,732 pension a year. You know how much money has to be in the pension fund to pay just that one person's pension? Over a million dollars. You have to have a million tax dollars invested in a pension fund to pay for one man's pension. And then you gotta raise taxes this year so we can pay him another $12,000 and give him more free coffee. Don't laugh, citizens, it's not a joke, it's real. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes. Do we have any other citizens to be heard today? If you could state your name and address.
Uh, my name is Eric Arnt, and I live at 3252 West 13th Street. I have a whole book here, but I'm only reading the first couple of pages. The city of Erie needs to take action and stop the fluoridation of its drinking water to protect the health and well-being of all its citizens. Fluoridation is the adding of fluoride to drinking water supplies as a medication claimed to prevent tooth decay when swallowed. The amount of standard .24% fluoridated toothpaste used for brushing your teeth contains as much fluoride as 10 ounces of .7 parts per million fluoridated tap water. And yet, we are told not to swallow pharmaceutical-grade fluoride in our toothpaste, in mouth rinse or at the dentist. Check your toothpaste warnings, ask your dentist before your next fluoride treatment. Water fluoridation is mass medication without individual patient consent. Proponents claim water fluoridation is not medication, but the definition of medicine is a substance given to people to help prevent or combat a disease. Fluoride is added to the water to help combat or prevent tooth decay, a disease. Therefore, fluoride is being used as medicine and water fluoridation is mass medication. The official FDA classification of fluoride is an unapproved drug. This means that the FDA has never regulated fluoride for ingestion, and as a result, fluoride has never been subjected to randomized clinical trials for effectiveness or safety as required for other drugs. It's unethical. It removes freedom of choice and instead is medication by force. No government has the right to force medication on its people to fight a non-contagious, non-life-threatening disease. And just what is informed consent? Most medical procedures or treatments involve some risk. It's the doctor's responsibility to give the patient information about a particular treatment or procedure so the patient can decide whether to undergo the treatment, procedure or test. This process of providing essential information to the patient and getting the patient's agreement to a certain medical procedure or treatment is informed consent. Whether or not a patient gave his or her informed consent to a treatment is crucial in the law of medical malpractice. If a doctor does not get a patient's informed consent, and the patient would have not opted for the treatment if he or she knew about the risks, the patient may be able to sue the doctor for medical malpractice. The amount of drinking water consumed by individuals varies greatly. The more we drink, the more we medicate ourselves. How can we control the proper fluoride dose via drinking water when all persons of varying age, body weight and health predisposition receive uncontrolled amounts of fluoridated water from the tap and through the foods and drinks containing fluoridated water? Instead of pharmaceutical-grade fluoride, our water is actually fluoridated with hydrofluorosilic acid. Hydrofluorosilic acid is an industrial-toxic, environmentally hazardous waste byproduct of the phosphate production mining industry, containing traces of lead, arsenic and mercury. Industry profits by selling hydrofluorosilic acid to municipalities as a product rather than paying to properly neutralize it and dispose of this pollutant. It costs thousands of dollars per tonne to properly dispose of hydrofluorosilic acid. Fluoride accumulates in our bodies over a lifetime, as do lead, arsenic and mercury. All our known toxins all pose serious health hazards. Scientific evidence suggests that both fluoride and lead are neurotoxins and are persistent and bioaccumulative in nature, that build up in our bodies over a lifetime, causing us health harm. Scientific evidence also suggests that both fluoride and arsenic are carcinogens. There's no known safe dose for carcinogens. According to the Goslin 1983 Clinical Toxicology textbook, relative toxicity ratings for lead, arsenic and fluoride are all comparable. Lead is very toxic, arsenic is extremely toxic, and fluoride is very too extremely toxic. Hydrofluorosilic acid is unprocessed, untreated, has never been scientifically tested as safe for human consumption, and has never been scientifically shown to be effective at strengthening tooth enamel and/or reducing cavities when ingested systemically or even when washing over the teeth. An ever-growing body of scientific research made public indicates that reasons for water fluoridation are no longer scientifically valid or even necessary. The CDC itself confessed that the major benefits of fluoride are topical, not systemic. In other words, fluoride works on the outside surface of the tooth, not from inside the body. As evidence mounts that fluoride in drinking water, along with its bundled contaminants, poses significant hazard to people, animals, the environment and the ecosystem, all government agencies have a duty and obligation to review and respond to those concerns. According to the CDC's National Survey of Dental Fluorosis, black and Mexican-American children have significantly higher rates of dental fluorosis than white children. The recognition that minority children appear to be more vulnerable to toxic effects of fluoride, combined with the fact that low-income families are less able to avoid drinking fluoridated water, has prompted prominent leaders in the environmental justice movement to oppose mandatory fluoridation in Georgia. A statement issued in May of 2011 by Andrew Young, a colleague of Martin Luther King Jr. and former mayor of Atlanta and former U.S. ambassador to the United Nations, stated, "I am most deeply concerned for poor families who have babies..."
Mr. Barnes, your time is up. I'm so sorry.
I have a half-page left, can I just finish it, please?
Please, quickly, please.
Okay. "I am most deeply concerned for poor families who have babies. If they cannot afford unfluoridated water for the baby's milk formula, do their babies not count? Of course they do. This is an issue of fairness, civil rights and compassion. We must find better ways to prevent cavities, such as helping those most at risk of cavities obtain access to the services of a dentist. My father was a dentist. I formerly was a strong believer in the benefits of water fluoridation for preventing cavities, but many things that we began to do 50 or more years ago, we no la, we now no longer do because we have learned further information that changes our practices and policies. So it is with fluoride." And I just have these last two paragraphs. "The community also needs to consider that as a result of this..."
Sir, we're gonna have to cut you off there, because we really want to stick to five minutes and give everybody a chance, so I'm so sorry. If you want to drop off a copy sometime to pass up to council, we can do that.
Can I give it to you right now?
If you want to give a copies.
Yes.
And I, we thank you. Thank you.
Can you read the information in these? Seriously, it's, I tried to compile it, just a small, basic thing of, and at the very end, there's three different cities in Pennsylvania that have stopped fluoridation, one is Bucks County that has 385,000 customers.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir. Thank you.
Richard Wagner, 42nd State. During last night's State of the Union, the president spoke of tax fairness, sort of taking from the rich and giving to the poor, primarily to help the middle class enjoy a better quality of life. Why is it in our city we use a complete opposite approach? I'm a middle-class citizen with limited resources, but you raised my taxes approximately $200 a year last year, just for the right to live in the city. In five minutes, I couldn't list the non-tax properties that exist in Erie. And what did they get for 2015? Another year of having middle class provide them with police, fire, streets and everything else our city provides for 100% of its operation. So as I take it from the State of the Union address, the city of Erie and its leaders are in complete contradiction to the efforts of our president and our federal government. I first have to clear the air by what I'm gonna talk about. As a country and as a community, the men and women who serve our country's military deserve our gratitude and support at every turn. For without their heroic efforts defending our freedoms, none of us would be able to live in a country where democracy is allowed to thrive. Upon saying that, I have to question the federal funds being laundered through the city and its economic development department to the tune of $1.174 million to support a $9 million project sponsored by the HANDS organization to house our vets. I always go back to very fundamental mathematics. If you spend $9 million to build 31 apartments, let me correct that, to remodel 31 apartments. Yes, it's remodel, not build. Leads me to a question. How many of you sitting on council live in a $300,000 house? I believe it's none of you. $300,000 is the cost per rental unit that, that we're gonna absorb. How in the world could you stand and support this project when the cost per unit can't be justified? Let's say that it should go forward. Why, out of the seven of you, not one question was asked as to why it costs so much money to remodel two buildings? That same $9 million, if used wisely, could provide 90 $100,000 homes for our veterans. Three times the amount of affordable housing could be generated using that enormous amount of money. But not one of you questioned the utter ridiculous amount HANDS is spending on 31 rental units. And by the way, I'm sure the property wouldn't be assessed for tax purposes at $9 million. That seems impossible to me. But let's just assume that it was. That is $300,000 worth of taxes that the city won't be getting for this project. And again, God bless our veterans. And, you know, people come up here and, and their level of expertise is questioned, or maybe you don't want to pay a lot of attention to what we say. But when, when it comes to renovations, I'm pretty handy with a hammer. And my son-in-law bought a house in Sunnydale, it's just above the Glenwood Golf Course. And I said, "You buy it," I says, "I'll pay to get it fixed up and then we'll flip it." We did a four-bedroom, two-story brick house, two bathrooms, completely redone, kitchen, furnace and all the landscaping and cutting down, we spent $6,000 cutting down trees. And we did that for $104,000. And we're gonna spend $300,000 on remodel jobs and 27th and Peach certainly needs it and, and, and they've done some good work, HANDS. But I just think, that's a lot of money, you know? And, and could we service 100 vets, perhaps, for, at $100,000 a piece? I think so. And, uh, that's just my thoughts for today. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Thank you.
My name is McDonald, my prop is 19th and Reed. I don't know what you all think about our vets. They risk everything. I think when they come back here, they shouldn't even be taxed no more. You wouldn't go risk your life, they go there and risk their life. And a lot of them come back all maimed up, leg missing, arm missing, some of them don't have eyes. And, uh, we don't do nothing for them. Before President Obama became president, they were mistreated at the veterans' hospital. Got to wait years to go to the hospital to get something done that wasn't your fault, you going to try to protect your country? This is not their country anymore. This is a foreigners' country. You treat the foreigners better than you do our veterans. That's a shame. I hope when God come, he have, not, I'm not speaking against y'all, but you ain't saying nothing anyway. Those people that are running the country down there, in the, the, in the capital and down in Washington DC, our men are treated terrible. I know they could be treated better. Look what you do for them foreigners coming in here. And I'm not against them, I don't blame them for coming. Come and get this free stuff. They're getting our money, these, this, these, uh, nonprofit organizations. Them big salaries they getting, I, you know what, I, and I used to believe in that, you know, trying to help, I, I'm not in no position, but God love a cheerful giver. And I try to give and, and, and have in my heart to give. These people's getting almost a million dollars, the president don't make that kind of money. And he got the whole country, sometime the whole, uh, world on his shoulders. Lord have mercy on all of us. That lake of fire gonna be full. And the lake of fire, you look at that water out there, it's gonna be burning and you're gonna be in it for your ill-doings back here. You think you're not gonna pay for it? You're gonna answer for what you're doing back here. I promise you that. Read your Bible. Read your Bible. Y'all should be able to read. Everything, everybody up there supposed to be educated, at least a little bit. I didn't get that much, I had to go to work, I come up on welfare. But I thank God, I'm not complaining. I thank God I'm still here. He been good to me. I done had some valleys that it was pretty hard to come out of and some mountains was hard to climb, but God been good to me through it all. I'm still here. I'm, them, them hotels down there, that you didn't put no taxes on, that don't even make no debt-blame sense to me. Don't make no sense. They're making money. It costs money to live in that hotel. It costs money when you rent that convention center down there, but you don't wanna tax them. Somebody's getting their pockets padded. Somebody, but let me tell you something, ill God gain, God don't like that. And it will come back to you. It will come back to you, I promise you that. You, you, you might say, "Well, why are you making such problems? What can you do?" I'm going by what the Bible said. I'm going by what the Bible said. God will handle you and them back down in Washington and in the capital in his time. He not gonna do it in your time, he's going to do it in his time. It will be done. This town, and I'm not, I'm just using this town, there's so much prejudice and segregation here, you could cut it with a knife. God don't like that. That begins in, at the home, you teaching your kids. That's bad, that goes against them. Hatred is a poison to the body. Love is a medicine to the body. I'm not saying you can, you got to love everybody, but you ought to try to love somebody. God loved you because he died for you. Who are you willing to die for? If you could send somebody else to die for you, you'd send them, you wouldn't die, you gonna try to stay here as long as you can, even on somebody else's time. But when your time come, you're gonna leave him. I say, God have mercy on you.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Any other citizens to be heard? Are there any other citizens to be heard today? Any other citizens to be heard? If you can give your name and address, please.
My name is Danielle Arnt. My address is 3252 West 13th Street. Okay. I also wanted to finish up the fluoride. My husband was speaking a minute ago. "The community also needs to consider that as a result of this fluoridation, Erie's wastewater is also being contaminated with fluoride, arsenic and lead, then reintroduced into the environment and into our source water. Sewage treatment does not remove fluoride, lead or arsenic. Most of the world has rejected artificial water fluoridation. 98% of the Western Europe does not fluoridate, yet their teeth are found to be as good, if not better than ours." Sorry, I'm a little nervous. "Fluoride is not an essential nutrient. No bodily process, processes require it. For those who feel they need it, there are ways to receive individual fluoride treatments, through toothpaste, mouth rinse, dental chair applications or fluoride tablets. Water fluoridation is unfounded and outdated. I know that fluoridation may not be the greatest environmental health threat, but it seems it would be one of the easiest to end. Perhaps Dr. J. William Hertz, senior chemist at the U.S. EPA headquarters, said it best. If this stuff, hydrofluorosilic acid, gets out into the air, it's a pollutant. If it gets into the river, it's a pollutant. If it gets into the lake, it's a pollutant. But if it goes right straight into your drinking water system, it's not a pollutant." That's amazing. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens to be heard? Any other citizens to be heard? Ms. Roby, we can now continue with the rest of the meeting.
Okay, ordinance for final passage. Council file number 15905, official ordinance number three of 2015, an ordinance appropriating the editing and inclusion of certain ordinances as parts of the various component codes of the codified ordinance of Erie, Pennsylvania. By Mr. Witherspoon and seconded by Mr. Winarski, that council file ordinance bill number 15905, and now known as official file ordinance number three of 2015, be finally passed by the city council. Mr. Jones, Mr. Kotowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan. City council pass official file ordinance number three of 2015, finally by yeas six, naes zero. That takes us to ordinances for first reading. Ordinance number 15906, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $200,000... Ordinance Number 15906, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $239,975 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to provide for the expenditure thereof for construction of the historic Little Italy Streetscape Improvement Project. By Mr. Mersky and seconded by Mr. Brennan, that Council File Ordinance Number 15906, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the City Council. Mr. Jones, Mr. Kotowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance Number 15906, by ayes six, nays zero, on first reading. Council File 15907, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $93,826 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to provide for the expenditure thereof for construction of the Perry Square Curb Bumpout Project. By Mr. Mersky, seconded by Mr. Brennan, the Council File Ordinance Number 15907, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the City Council. Mr. Jones, Mr. Kotowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance Number 15907, by ayes six, nays zero, on first reading. Council File 15908, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $102,500 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue through a coastal zone management grant, $45,000, PennDOT MPO funding, $60,000, and Erie County funding, $7,500, providing for the expenditure thereof for the City of Erie Comprehensive Plan Initiative Phase Two. By Mr. Mersky and seconded by Mr. Brennan, that Council File Ordinance Number 15908, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the City Council. Mr. Jones, Mr. Kotowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance Number 15908, by ayes six, nays That'll take us to new business, Mr. President.
Mr. President, I'd like to move the balance of the agenda.
Yes.
I'll second.
Do we have a second? Any separations? Okay.
Okay.
We're gonna move the balance of the agenda.
Okay, moving the balance of the agenda, Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Haran Kunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kotowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon. That'll take us to committee reports, Mr. President.
Okay, let's start today with Mr. Witherspoon. Are you ready?
Yes, I'm ready, Mr. President. No report.
Okay. Mr. Mersky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few things to report. I attended the Martin Luther King March on Monday. It was some of the best weather we've had for a Martin Luther King March in a long time. It was well-attended, and thank you to everyone who came out to honor the legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King. As they said at the march, it was not a day off, it was a day on. And tomorrow, the Erie County Convention Center Authority meets. And finally, Streets Department is out salting and plowing, so please follow the even/odd parking regulations so that we can get the inner-city streets taken care of as needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mersky. Mr. Jones, or do you want us to go to Mr. Kotowski? Are you ready?
Oh, no, absolutely, I'm ready. Thank you, Mr. President. Just very quickly, I'm looking forward to, again, being able to get started with liaison assignments in this new year, and be working with the Airport Authority, the Water Authority, Economic Development, and all the blighted properties, CDBG planning, all those components connected to economic development. Also, we'll be working with, and communicating, and connecting, and a lot more, I think, this year with some of the nonprofit community centers in the city, to try and just continue to support them in the work that they're doing, but also respectfully challenge them to do better work, and to be diversified in their sources of revenue. Because, you know, as we've figured out and seen the last several years, CDBG funds have continued to decrease, and their applications have continually been cut as far as the amounts that we are able to provide to them. So, look forward to working with those directors throughout the community of nonprofits, and also just kind of have some of those challenging conversations with some nonprofit groups, because a lot of the concerns around tax exemption, but service reception, is a legitimate conversation. And so, I don't know what, you know, there's certain laws, obviously, that bind what we can do, but maybe there's also certain relationships that can be massaged and continue to be worked with, as know as our once, just retired, Mr. Rush, was really big on working with nonprofits to try and, you know, institute pilot programs, and to, you know, make those relationships fruitful financially for the city. So I think that's not just the administration or one person on the fifth floor's job, if we can all, you know, kind of do that, and kind of come as a team, that might be an interesting way of looking at it, and expanding what's already been done. Also, my, another assignment for the year is to be the Chair of the Finance Committee. I'm not sure how that happened. I was feeling, I was feeling some kind of, yeah, I think the President, his first official act was to strong-arm me. No, but I look forward to that challenge, look forward to working with the administration even a little closer in that area with the Finance Department, to really figure out some ways, and try to put some legs to some of these ideas that we've had over the last few years. Not trying to reinvent the wheel in the areas where it's effective, but in areas where it's broken, let's put it together and try to make some things happen. I regrettably missed the Martin Luther King series of services and celebrations in the march this year. It's the first time, I don't remember the last time I wasn't there, but the reason that I missed was that I was, I believe Dr. King would be happy I was taking my son back to school. And so, as Mr. Mersky said, it wasn't a day off, it was a day on. And I was on the road for four hours one way, allowing my son to have the opportunity that Dr. King and so, so many others before him, during his time, and since his time, have fought for an equal opportunity to learn and to be at your best. So, to all the, all those who were involved in the planning, congratulations on success. They're one of the greatest crowds we've had in a while, and so that's really exciting. And again, look forward to the rest of the year, being productive and effective with our new president, and with our liaison assignments, and doing what we have to do for the city. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Winarsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Once again, good evening, everyone. Want to thank the Mr. President for enabling me to once again be the liaison to the E or the EMTA. I have been that liaison for the past three or four years. Not sure exactly what it's been for, but it's been, it's been a work in progress with them, and I'm, they've started a $40 million project here within the last couple of years that if anybody's been by 14th and Parade, they'll see how big this expansion and new facility is. One thing I've grown to learn with the MTA, their transparency and their updating, for me as well as our council, has been perfect. There's no surprises, anything comes up, they make sure, they make us aware of things, and they're not afraid to give us updates during the year, as well as, once again, this year, I will ask for those updates to come to council during our caucus sessions, and whether it's once or twice a year, at least to let us know how things are going, as well as what information I can bring to you. It's definitely, once again, a $40 million project going on over there, and within the last year, in Phase One, this place is huge, and I just, makes you happy and excited on, you know, the growth in the east side over there. One of my new liaisons with the Port Authority, Ms. Brenda Sandberg, is our new CEO, which always worked well with her while we were on council, in her position with the city then, as well as look forward to it coming up. Naturally, on the port, there's always something going on. I am also going to ask her to update us at council at our caucus meetings to, you know, there again, not every three months, but at least twice a year, just to let us know what's going on, if there's any new developments, just something to keep abreast of what's Also, going to keep everybody updated with our refuse. It's one of my, one of my assignments on council, and I know we, our delinquents were well over 2 million, they're gradually decreasing with the combined billing, and with that, I just want to keep you updated on how the combined billing is working, and how hopefully those delinquents are digressing, so it'll be an advantage for us, and go from there. We did go to the Erie Insurance, had a technical training center opening here, grand opening this past week, and a good partner for the City of Erie is Erie Insurance, naturally. Big money they've spent, they are a great tax-paying body, number-one employer, I believe, in the City of Erie, so it's good to recognize them when that recognition is deserved. So, thank you, a great facility, and look forward to continued growth, which is, they are always doing with some different buildings on our Lower East Side or lower downtown area, and it's great to have a partner like that. Other than that, I look forward to the new year with our new council, and, not our new council, just our newly-aligned council and our different seating. I gotta send this to Curtis, but anyway, thank you, and good night.
Thank you, Mr. Winarsky. Mr. Kotowski.
Yes, I have a brief report. My only report is, with regret, I didn't get to get down to City Hall on Fred Rush's last day. And Fred and I go back quite a few years, and I wanted to tell Fred, you know, if he's listening to this, that I'll miss him. We had some great conversations. We spent a lot of time on the road together, both on city business and going to a few ballgames, and the nice thing about, he and I were about the same age, so we would talk about our service during Vietnam, and we'd talk about our, the city that we remember that's changed now, and how politics have changed. And there's a lot of institutional knowledge locked up in Fred. Fred was a great liaison to many mayors. He brought with him the ability to calm down people when it seemed like they were ready to go at each other. That was one of his great attributes. Fred could talk to you, he could, he could bring the truth to you like no man could. And that, I'll miss him, and with that, Fred, good luck, and I'm sure we'll run into each other in the future. And Dave, congratulations on your term.
Thank you, Ms. Kotowski. Mrs. Controller, any report today?
I have no report.
Okay. Administration, Mrs. Beck.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just very briefly, I would like to say thank you to everyone who had an opportunity to participate in the MOK celebrations throughout the weekend. Again, great participation, beautiful day for the walk outside of City Hall and over to the MOK Center. So, thank you to everyone who was able to be there. Wanted to also give my congratulations and sentiments to Mr. Fred Rush, who is going to be missed on the fifth floor. He was a great mentor, a veteran, always had a story to tell, relevant or not, but, or two or three. He will certainly be missed around City Hall, and hopefully, he will only be a phone call away, and check in on us to make sure that we're all doing our jobs. Also had the opportunity to attend the Erie Insurance Technical Learning Center grand opening. What a phenomenal investment Erie Insurance has made in the downtown. My understanding is that they have schools scheduled, trainings scheduled for two weeks' period throughout the next two years. So that means hotels, restaurants, shopping, buses, all of those things that are important and vibrant to our downtown, they have scheduled for the next two years, people coming through their learning center. So we'll be welcoming to all of the agents and folks that will be new to our downtown. And again, congratulations to you, Mr. Brennan, we look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Ms. Beck. Mr. Velela, any report today? No?
Not today.
Not today? Okay. Okay, I do have a couple of things I wanted to mention here. I also was fortunate to attend the Erie Insurance Technical Learning Center ribbon-cutting, and I just want to thank Erie Insurance, they're a great example of, you know, a company is really helping out their neighborhood, which helps out the city and helps out everybody. You know, all the security, the public safety in that area is really taken care of because of how well they take care of their properties and their buildings, and hopefully, they continue to grow and help Erie continue to grow also. I was able to share some cake with Mr. Rush this past weekend, or past Friday, and I just want to thank Fred for the incredible job he's done over the many years that he's been in the city. And also, I hear so many stories about how he's mentored so many, so many of our youth throughout the many years here. So, again, congratulations and thank you, Fred, for all your work. I also attended the Martin Luther King March with Mr. Mersky, and, you know, I guess, I just want to say that I was impressed with the large number of young people that were there, and I really just want to thank their parents for enabling them to participate, and to really, you know, celebrate the life and achievements of Martin Luther King that day. But it was a great event, and a lot of great speakers that were there to really talk about the day and why we were there. And just last item here, I have a, there's an event coming up this Friday, it's called the Preservation Happy Hour. This has kind of been a recurring event that was created to bring people together, to talk about preservation of built environment, and to preserve and promote Erie, what Erie has. So it's this Friday at 5:00 PM at the Plumb and Tavern, if anyone's interested. And that's it. And Ms. Robey, you want to end the meeting?
City Council insurance at 8:19. Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kotowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon.